Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome to the Public Services Committee here at the Wigan Auditorium Thursday evening, March 13th, 6:00 PM. Here with us are Councilor Daigle, Councilor Peach, Councilor Gould, Councilor Gamash, Councilor Higgins, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor McGinn, and Councilor Melville. Members of the committee, Gamash, Melville, Rozignol, and Welton. Could I have Councilor Manning-Martin, would you mind sitting in for Councilor Welton? He should be here shortly. With that, this was in regards to a motion set forth by Councilor Rozignol. The motion was moved to request that a representative from Republic Services appear before the City Council and that the Health Department provide a history of fines that have been issued or are pending. That list was sent to us months ago by the Mayor's Office, so I think that portion is all set. With that, I would like to ask Mr. Higgins to come up to the podium if you could, not Councilor Higgins. Mr. Higgins, you want to come up to the podium for Brian?
Good evening. My name is Dan Higgins. My name is Dan Higgins, area sales manager for municipal sales in New England for Republic Services. With me is Brian. He is our general manager for all of operations in PBD. We have four facilities. Brian Skeen is our GM for four facilities, 222 employees. Thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight. As your service provider, we don't always get to see everybody. We occasionally meet people at the MMA. We did give you a packet to share with you. If there's something in there that-
Could I briefly get a motion to receive on that packet?
Motion to receive.
It's a late communication. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. It covers a lot of information. I'm not going to cover that tonight, but we wanted to share some information about the industry, where it's going, about services for the city as well. And we're more than happy to address any questions you have after this meeting or come back again and join the committee. On the second page in there identifies the service delivery since January 1 for our company on page two. And it details that we had 242,000 drive-bys in the city since January 1 that goes to last week. That's how many times our trucks passed by the residents' homes to pick up either trash or recycling since the beginning of the year. And reported to be public by the residents was 46 missed pickups. When a resident calls us and lets us know that there is a service failure where we haven't picked up a home, we basically, we record that in our system and dispatch it out to our drivers. And we recover those normally on the same day, it could be the second day, the next day. That's 99.98% unscheduled service completion. And based on our experience, about half of our calls, 45% of the calls that we get, are sometimes worry calls. They could be folks who we may have tagged the recycling because there's contamination on it, they may call us on that. It could be that there was a number of holidays in January and February where the schedule changed. They could be calling, think we missed them on the day of the holiday when we weren't coming by the city. So for us, you know, our job is to be there every day and pick up the trash and recycling on schedule. That's our job. We had 46 missed pickups reported to us since the beginning of the year. That's not a huge amount, but still for us, we look at why did it happen? Is it an educational opportunity with our drivers? Is it an educational opportunity with the resident? On page three, just kind of quickly, the challenges that we have. Just Republic Services has been operating in Massachusetts for over 65 years. And back in 2022, we merged with JRM, the city's trash recycling contractor. So we've been the provider for the city since 2022. Last year, we had issues with the city's end site. The city has a separate contract with Cavanta and Havrell for solid waste disposal. At times, it takes us to, when we leave the city, it takes us about an hour to get there. And at times last year, some of the wait times in the incinerator facility could be between one, two, or four hours. So we had to make decisions for us to be able to get into that facility before they close for the day to break off from our routes. So the dilemma we have is the city has a contractor where we're required to bring the residents' trash. We have no other options but to go there. And because of the wait times, incinerators go down, they go some, they get down for scheduled maintenance and other times they get, they go down for any reason, and it's not always planned. So we had cases last year where we had two- to four-hour delays and we couldn't complete the routes in town. We met with DPW and the mayor's staff, and we ended up working with the city leadership and with Cavanta, who is the city's contractor. And we basically, we basically ended in, we entered into a transload agreement with Cavanta and the city where we're now dumping the city's trash trucks at Cavanta's facility in Danvers, which is a lot closer and doesn't have the two- to four-hour wait times. And then we, Republic, is transloading those loads to the incinerator at night when there's no traffic and no wait times. So we resolved that issue. We entered into agreement with Cavanta and the city to do that. And to be frank with you, it's costing us about $150,000 a year to do that. But it allows us to have our trucks in the neighborhoods picking up trash every day through the end of the day so that we can get to the facility and not have the wait times. So that was a big challenge for us last year, and we worked with both the city staff and Cavanta to get that. The other thing is that we're required, the DOT requires the city L drivers work no more than 12 hours a day. When we took over these operations, they weren't always consistent with that requirement. So we, when we had those wait times last year, we couldn't send guys back here at night to work because at 12 hours, it's a violation of federal law and it's unsafe for them and the community. So we have everybody in compliance, and that was part of the challenges we had last year that we worked through. From our standpoint, the challenges we have is manual collection with two-man crews. Most of the companies in the industry no longer will bid in those type of contracts because they're too manual intensive, they're not efficient, and they're a big safety risk for our drivers and helpers. We, you know, we haven't bid on a contract like that in a while in the Commonwealth. So at the point that the town, the city contract, at some point, the city's contract will end, and most likely you'd be, the only options you'll have will be automation. The consistency of service can be impacted when we have the normal guys around the routes off the routes, you know, if they're injured or something happens. When we have someone else covering a route, that's when it's a real challenge for our crews because they don't know the routes, they don't know the order of the neighborhoods, they get confused in terms of some of the routing. So for us, you know, the most important thing is keeping the same driver on the truck, same truck every day. From our standpoint in the industry, you know, real low trucks are, we have more automated trucks in our fleet than we do real low trucks. We don't purchase many of them, so to have backup trucks available, we have drivers and we have trucks that are trained to do automated service versus the manual that we have here for the city. So we'd be interested in terms of some of the solutions, and we gave you a lot of information in this packet, but it outlines the current program, some of the modifications for you to consider going forward. And then, and what would automation mean? You know, it's, to us, it's service quality and consistency, it's efficient, it's less costly than manual collection, it's safe. And then our experience, we compared the, currently the residents are diverting about 18% of the waste in recycling. So that's great. So it's not going to, the incinerator to be burnt, it's being recycled. Our experience is that towns that go from a manual collection program to automated with carts, depending on the size of the carts, you can increase that diversion by about 10% to 28% potentially. So for PBD, that would be about $300,000 a year in disposal savings based on what you're currently paying. So long-term, if your sustainability goals are to increase the waste diversion and recycling, we'd want to consider going to carts at some point to try to get there. Most companies in the industry are no longer bidding manual collection. Some of the recent cities and towns have gone out to bid. Everybody has responded with automated. After COVID, it was very difficult to get trucks and it's very difficult to hire drivers. We can hire drivers if they can work in an automated truck. A manual truck is a real difficult task to keep drivers in the seats long-term. Guys on a manual route like in PBD, many of them won't be able to retire because at some point, they're going to get worn out. If they're in an automated truck, they can probably close down their career, you know, in automated trucks, it's less physically demanding. In terms of, in the packet, there's some information in there just to share with you. Track My Truck is an app we've developed, we're getting implemented in the next year where a municipal resident could have an app on their phone and they could check on the status of where our truck is. So you could look on the phone and say, okay, our driver's an hour away. So sometimes we get phone calls of residents that worry that we're not there the time that they, that we normally are, and they call into us at City Hall. We also, we have a recycling center here in PBD. We're going through a major, major upgrade, about $25 million upgrade to that facility. And our goal is to be able to get cleaner and more valuable recyclables through that facility. Our Republic also has opened a Palmer Center where all the water bottles that we drink, right now they get recycled once, then they become carpeting in a park bench or a vest. We've opened up a Palmer Center where those bottles will be recycled over and over again once they come out of the mirth. We're also, we've implemented e-vehicles. If that's, if that's something that the city wants to look at at some point, we have e-vehicles that are picking up trash recycling throughout the country. And the requirement is that we're only developing automated vehicles for that. We also offer other environmental services. Household assist, waste collection, emergency response, and disaster response. So we wanted to spend a couple of minutes here to kind of give you an update of what's been going on, what we've been doing, how we've addressed it, and some of the services that we respond.
Thank you very much. Very quickly, Council Welton is here, but I still need you, Councilman Manning-Martin, because I neglected the cover for Council Rozignol. If you could stay with the committee, so I appreciate that you're in for Council Rozignol. With that, Brian, did you have to add anything before I open it up to the council or?
No, I'll, I'll be for any question, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Any councils have questions? Councilor Gould.
...in the committee, Mr. Chairman, but it's okay to go?
That's fine, Council.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate it. How often does the truck go from PBD to Havrell? I know you're going to Danvers now, but how, how often during an eight- or 12-hour day does a truck get emptied?
So now we don't go to Havrell anymore with the collection vehicles.
Okay.
So we're able to work that out.
Just speaking to the-
So now we don't go to Havrell anymore with the collection vehicles. So we're able to work out that deal, let's say, a year ago with Cavanta, the city of PBD, and ourselves, where my collection vehicles go directly to Danvers and they dump anywhere between one to two times per day. And then overnight, early AM rather, my trailers will go and they'll load out at Cavanta and they'll go up to Havrell and they'll dump there. And that saves a lot. I was in another business unit prior to coming here. We had the same issue with Havrell in the past as well. So we worked out another different deal up in that market that we took the stuff to Devens when we had the long waits. But they, and they, I know Cavanta, those guys, they're great, and they understand that Havrell, that there's an issue, the higher-ups. And there is, literally sometimes we wait in there one hour, two hours, sometimes up to four hours. I've seen it as bad once up to six hours that the guys were up there, my other business unit that I managed, so.
Brian, could you just state your name and title for the record for the clerk?
Yeah, sure. My name, Brian Skeen. I'm the general manager for the Northeast Mass Business Unit.
What's the total cost of the contract for PBD per year? What are you, what's the total cost in there?
It's like, I think it's, I don't have the exact number, I can follow up.
You don't have, no idea what the pickup costs the city of PBD?
I believe it's-
Trash pickup?
I don't, I don't have the exact numbers, including the disposal.
Can we switch midterm on a contract? Do you guys renegotiate terms of the contracts?
So you're saying change towing companies?
Pardon?
Automation.
Oh, change automation?
Automation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I should have specified.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. We've had several conversations with the mayor just talking about this already. I mean, our goal would be to go automation. That's what our goal is with all some of our manual contracts that we have. Because as Dan mentioned, as these contracts start expiring, as an organization, you know, we're not going to go manual, we're going to go automated, even if we have to walk right from the contract. So the answer is yeah, we'll, we'll negotiate at any time in the contract for automation.
Can you negotiate recycle and not trash pickup? Is that a possibility to go automation on recycle and not trash?
We prefer both.
Ideally, I think we'd all like to have automation for everything, but-
Yeah.
Automation on recycle, to me, the city's a disaster on trash day. It looks horrendous. Little bit of wind and you've got recycle, recyclables going every which way but loose.
Right.
You know, amongst my colleagues, we often talk about how disastrous the city looks on trash day.
Right. Well, automization provides totes as well, so it has a tote of service.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said the automation has a tote of service as well, so your trash is contained versus just laying on the street and blowing around?
Right, right. So is it, in thought process, is it possible to do a automated recycle and not an automated trash if that's a stumbling block?
You know, ultimately, it's, I would like both to go automated. And the reason why is because of just the safety aspect of it. Just a week and a half ago in PBD, one of my trash trucks on the side of the road stopped and the helper was out there collecting the refuse. And a truck, and we had the video of it, a box truck went, smashed in the back. Two years ago, we had two helpers. I would have had a fatality in the back of the truck a week and a half ago because of that. And we see this more often than not, trucks hitting our cars, our cars hitting our trucks, rather. So I would rather go all versus not, versus split.
Are you making an effort to have conversation with the mayor on that?
Yeah, we were having conversations, yeah. We'd like to further these conversations.
If you ever drive through Lynn on trash day, it is impeccable. The city of Lynn, which, you know, years ago was probably the eyesore, the not sure, at least from a trash and recycle pickup, is immaculate now.
They're automated.
They're what?
They're automated.
Correct. I don't know, I would love to see some serious discussion about automated, if we can't do trash pickup, at least automated on recycle.
Yeah, we'd truly work with the city, and if that's what it takes to stage automation, we would do it. And, you know, we have a disposal capacity crisis in Massachusetts. We rail trash out of state to our landfills out west and down south. So the incinerators are aging, two of them went into bankruptcy three years ago. The cost of going up as well, so the cost of disposal is going to continue to increase. You know, you have a favorable rate right now, the city has a good rate, but it's going to go up. And one way to keep that cost down is to use a cart and try to confine the trash and get more of the recyclables out of the trash cart into recyclables cart. Just going to a, you know, going from bins and barrels of recycling to a recycling cart will probably give you a boost of 10%. That's our experience on recycling because people have more capacity. The easier you make it, the more recycling that the residents will put out the curb.
Can I ask you to take, be the leader in the discussion about converting from manual to automated? Can you be the front-runner? Can you make it appealing for the city? Because if 31 is the end date of that contract, that's, that's going to be a disaster for the next six years. It's only going to get worse.
Yeah.
It's going to make it unappealing for people to want to live in PBD.
Right.
I can tell you that, it's going to make it unappealing. Thank you, fellas, very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Gamash. Thank you, Council Gould.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would also welcome you too for coming out this evening. It says that on page five, that the term, the current contract through June 2031, is that the expiration of the current contract?
Correct.
So, so you took this on from JRM, the contract?
Yeah.
So that was the length of the original contract?
Correct, yeah. We bought all the assets.
You bought out everything, yeah. Familiar with that. What is the, the average tonnage per week of trash? Would you have that on the top of your head or roughly? I mean, you're talking about a 10% decrease if we go to automated. It would be a considerable amount of weight, I would assume.
It would. I don't have the data, but I can get that to you. I can get you the exact number, you know, by the, the number of trucks, the number of dump times, what we're dumping per, per week, so I can get to that number.
So you mentioned there was two burn facilities currently, Havrell and Resco's Out, right? Is Resco still in operation?
Yeah, you have Resco in Lynn, you have Havrell, you got Milford, you got Rochester.
What's the one in Andover? Wasn't there a site in Andover?
Wheel Obrada.
Yeah, Wheel Obrada. Yeah.
The old Wheel Obrada, that's Win, that's the old Wheel Obrada.
Brian, if I could just ask you, I'm sorry, some of the councils can't hear when you're not-
No, I'm sorry.
Just the sound in the sort of third is terrible.
So Wheel Obrada is still-
Yeah, Dave, that's the old Wheel Obrada, they have North Andover, and then right across the street, they have TBI, which is Star Waste. So they're literally right across the street from them, Transfrost Station.
All right.
Dave, could I just, just, I do have the information. In terms of last year, each home generated 43.8 pounds per week of trash and 9.7 pounds a week of recycling, each home. And based on similar-sized cities, Mallaburo, Watertown, and West Springfield, that converted to, from a similar manual system to automation, you know, we think that we can reduce the trash by 19% and increase recycling by 41% based on what's happened in three other cities.
So there'd be, there'd be a marked increase of, a marked increase of savings for the city if you advance to automation, is basically-
Based on our experience.
Because you're going to reduce your, your labor cost and from one, from two-man to one-man.
Correct. We're going to reduce labor costs, and then you're going to have more containment of your trash and recyclables as well.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Councilor Gould, and I understand from the business point of view, you'd rather have the one truck for trash and one truck for recycle. And that way, you're not heading all over the streets with another different truck. So I know that not only Lynn, but Medford was the same way with their trash, and they went to the automation system, and it's a clean thing. It's, it's something that, you do limit the amount of, you know, the amount of totes you can have, but they seem to, the ones that have the heavy waste tend to put all their stuff in recycle because they can't put it in the trash totes. So I think that, you know, 20%, 28%, whatever your figure would be saved on recycle. I just hope that, you know, we can try to advance this quicker than, sooner than later. Council Gould is the same thing. We have a, you know, if the wind goes over 10 miles an hour or councils are getting calls for trash in the street, I have a, you know, when I see the weather and it says the wind's at 15 miles an hour, we should cancel trash pickup. But we can't do that, so. And it seems to be Mondays, we have the heavy wind because Ward 1 is the one that usually gets inundated with, with the trash. But having said that, I hope that you can try to meet with the mayor and try to expedite some type of agreement to move forward and get this thing taken care of. Our perspective not only is the savings in the contract itself, but the cleanliness of the city as well. And I think that's what people see more than the expense. So, again, thanks for coming down, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Dave. And that is our goal, to try to get automated before the 31st, so.
Thank you, Councilor Gamash. Before I go to Councilor Welton, just very briefly, I just want to say, because I was in a couple of meetings with Brian in particular about automation, and Council McGinn and Council Rozignol that I had met with Sharon Cameron years ago about automation. I think the issue is, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure this is the issue, that we have an additional six years on this contract, which was pretty lucrative for the city. And the mayor's reluctant to reopen that contract to provide for automation because he had, he was able to negotiate a pretty good deal through JRM. So I think that's what the holdup on this is. So I realize we probably all want to push automation. I just, the only reason I say this is because it might come up through all the councilors. We all may want to push automation, but I think that's the mayor's reluctance. Again, I'm not speaking for him, that's the thought process that I understood from those meetings. So with that, Council Welton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, could you just repeat that? What was the reluctance on automation? I couldn't hear you when you-
My apologies. So with automation, you know, as I said, Council McGinn, Council Rozignol, and I had met with Sharon Cameron, she did a lot of work to present to us why automation was the right thing for, for the rodent issues as well as cleanliness throughout the city. She had a couple of companies come in to present to us about the cost of the carts that would either be borne by the city or the resident, one or the other. At that point, it was brought to my attention that the mayor was able to secure a 10-year deal at the time with JRM. That deal was pretty lucrative on the city's side because of the increase in trash prices throughout the years. And the mayor's, or the city's reluctance, I should say, I don't want to continue to sound like I'm speaking for the mayor, but so I won't. The reluctance, I believe, is that the city has a 10-year deal, very lucrative, and does not want to give up that 10-year deal by reopening this contract in any way, shape, or form. Does that make sense? Okay, with that, Council Welton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for clarifying, and I appreciate you walking through. Thank you both gentlemen for joining us this evening and kind of what you were mentioning parlayed into the question that I had. About how much is it per cart that you're looking at, you know, per unit?
Depending on the size, Council, it could be between $35 and $55, depending on the size. And that's delivered and assembled.
Okay, great, thank you. So let's call it $35, and then we have, how many, I know we have a little under 60,000 residents, but how many residences do you pick up from?
14,000.
14,000, okay. So with that cost, is, and obviously, I'm not trying to negotiate, you know, terms or anything in the contract, what we're doing here, but would you forecast that there may be enough savings from, you know, on your end, from switching from a manual operation to an automated operation where those expenses for the carts could possibly be considered, you know, in the contract? And is it, I guess what I'm asking you is, is it a cost savings on your end to make the switch from manual to automation, enough so that it could maybe balance out some of the increased cost of the carts for the city?
It definitely does offset the cost of the carts, and you do have different options. You know, the Mass DEP has grants available, there's some other federal grants available that assist in the purchase of the carts, some of them up to $15 per cart. So that, you know, the, you know, the terms would need to be worked out, and I'd love to work it out tonight. But, you know, the terms have to be worked out in terms of how long the next contract is. So, you know, to the chairman's point, you know, there's six years left in the contract. We're flexible right now in terms of going into a new contract. You know, the carts last 10 years, they have a condition, they have a conditional warranty for 10 years. So the longer term the contract, you know, the better the terms can be.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation, very helpful.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Higgins. Brian, what's your last name?
Skeen.
Brian Skeen, S.K.
Skeen, S.K.E.H.I.N.
Thank you, Mr. Skeen. Yeah, thanks for being here. I mentioned it, Dan, on the way in, I am frequently in touch with Republic over various You've got Katie here locally, whose last name I'm going to mispronounce, so I'm not going to try, but she's been great, very responsive. I just, I just wish I didn't have to contact her so frequently. And it's, a lot of times it's around missed pickups, and the missed pickups have to do with, generally, I represent Ward 2, which is an older part of the city, but I'm sure my colleague, Council Peach, in Ward 3 probably has a similar issue where the truck is just too physically big to get up the street with cars parked on the street. And, and so they, they have to send back a smaller piece of equipment based on, you know, how people happen to be parked that day. And, you know, my frustration is that, you know, the streets aren't going to get any wider as time goes on. I just, if you could just, my request to her, but I'm not sure she's the decision-maker in this, was to just, can we just have the smaller truck always assigned to these streets? And then we won't have this issue, you know, on again, off again. Is that, is that something that you can kind of take back and take a look at with Katie? She certainly has enough emails from me and so forth that you'll, you'll get a sense of the frequency that I need to be in touch. Is that something that you could take some action on after this?
We have two, we call it pop trucks. So those are two smaller trucks, one's for recyclables and one's for trash we use. We have used them as a chase truck in other areas. I'll be honest, I'd have to look about dedicating it. I don't know right now, just based on capacity, to be honest, but I can certainly take a look at it. Katie, you said it was Katie. Katie's a- And Katie, you said it was Katie, Katie's a P V D, so I'd have to get with Kate, I'd have to take a look at the amount of streets, the number of streets, and then I'd have to take a look on the days too, as far as what days the pickup are.
That's, that's fine, I'm not asking for anything more than that.
It's something I have to look at first.
Not asking for you to make a commitment on the spot to a change, I'm just, I'm just asking you to evaluate it.
Sure, absolutely.
Because it seems to me like it's an avoidable problem, if we can figure out a system, if there's a more efficient way to call the chase truck in, if, or, you know, if dedicating it to that route doesn't make sense, there's got to be some systemic process approach to remedying this so that it doesn't result in residents calling their ward counselor every time their street gets missed. And I, I see Council Peach nodding in agreement over there, this must be happening to her as much as it happens to me. But I, I don't want the larger point to be missed here, I'm very appreciative of her responsiveness, and, you know, you should take that as positive feedback. I can't, I couldn't agree more with Councilor Gould, and some of the comments that Councilor Gamache made relative to our windy day problems, it just, it, it literally sends a shiver up my spine, you know, the majority of my ward gets picked up on Tuesday morning, and when it's windy out, I just, it's a mess, it's just, it's a mess everywhere. I mean, I, on my own street, with my neighbors, I, I'm often running around like a crazy person if I happen to be there around the time that the wind blows, and picking up trash everywhere. I know Council Melville is constantly picking up trash in his neighborhood, he's also a Ward Two resident. It's insane, and it's just, it's, it's terrible because we've seen all the other area communities go to the standardized containers, you know, Salem's doing it, Danvus is doing it, there were a pretty recent conversion, correct me if I'm wrong, I see you nodding, Council Gould mentioned Lynn. So we're surrounded by communities that are doing this, but, but we're not doing it, and, and, you know, I, I think that, Mr. Chairman, Council Turco is correct, that the root of the problem is the long-term contract. This may be a distinction without a difference, I, it was a ten-year contract, Mr. Chairman, but that was ten years, two thousand sixteen to twenty-twenty-six. The twenty-thirty-one enters in because there's five option years.
Correct.
And I, and I believe the, I believe that's at the city's option to, to take those extensions.
Correct.
And, and I think, you know, I'm sure because we have this favorable contract that was negotiated nearly ten years ago, I, I mean, it, right now, I'm looking at the contract as we speak, and, you know, I, there's a column here for trash collection total, and there's a column for recycling collection, and we see what the total annual cost is, so that must be what you get every year, full stop, right? Everything, all the variable costs and tipping fees, and that's Covanta, that's not you guys.
Correct.
That's correct. So, so, you know, I, I hear what you're saying about if we convert more to recycling, that, that maybe we can come up with a more favorable balance, and that, that's going to reduce our tipping fees. Is that going to reduce both our tipping fees and, and our, our total collection costs, or is it, or is it one or the other?
If you, if you go to cot option, is what you're asking, and I apologize, I'm a little hot- haired, so I apologize.
It's rough, it's rough hearing in here, I know that, so I'll, I'll just, I'll simplify the question. If we go to the cart option, and your automated trucks, and we are successful in increasing the percentage of, of refuse that goes into the recycling stream rather than into the trash stream, you know, is that going to reduce both our pickup costs and our tipping costs, or is it, or is it one or the other, or is it both?
Our experience, it could be both, and we have to go off experiences for past towns that we service that are similar to this size, because what you're going to be doing is you're going to be containing your recyclables, you're going to put all your recyclables in one container, and you're going to be putting all your trash in one container. So you're going to be dictating how much they can put in each container. Now, as far as, if you're asking if we're going to be, you're going to be able to pull more recyclables out to load the disposal, that's really up to the consumer, whether they're going to pull that out and put it into recyclables. You know, we do have stickers where we have contamination that we can tag cans for contamination to help in the effort to train folks to be better at recyclable, but if you do control and contain both the recyclables and the wastes, our experience is, is you do see a reduction in your overall disposal based on the current, the current setup that you guys have right now.
But you would have to factor that in, you mean, based on your experience in other communities, if, if you were negotiating a new contract? Well, listen, would there be another contract like this, where it's a fixed amount, or is it, or you're going to?
Generally speaking, and the current contract is two million two hundred and thirty-four thousand, I didn't want to misspeak, but two million two thirty-four is the current contract. I mean, generally speaking, like, your contract includes the recycling processing, so generally speaking, the industry, that's a separate item, and we'll, we'll share the recycling market value with you, there's a set processing cost for that. So to answer the question is about cost, we, we kind of identified in here considerations the city would need to have and make, and it depends on the frequency of service, the type of service, you know, the frequency. Some cities have said, hey, bulk is a non-essential service, it doesn't impact health, and they'll carve that out of the collection contract, and in many cities and towns, we pick up the bulk, the resident calls us, they pay us twenty-five dollars, we come and get it, versus having every, having our trucks go and pick up bulk fifty-two weeks a year in the cities, that changes the cost. There's a lot of factors that can help get to where you want to get there, and, you know, if you open the contract up and work with us to automate tomorrow, we're going to work with you long-term on that rate as well.
I'm glad you threw out that number, because that's, that's the number I'm looking at, two-point-two-three-four million. Next year, two-point-two-seven-eight million, right? And that's, that's the end of the term of the contract, and then we have those five option years. As, as, as Mr. Chairman, Council Turco said, we, we're not in a position here to negotiate this contract, but, you know, there's got to be a win-win in here somewhere, because you've been pretty clear, and what you're saying makes perfect sense, it's not optimal for your company to go out and, and collect it manually like, like they are now, it's not, it's not, it's not the direction you've gone in other area communities, you're a national company, right? And it's safe for your drivers to use automation, it's more efficient overall, so you want to get there. Clearly, several of us want to get here, get there, we just need to figure out what the win-win is, and that will kind of create a scenario where the mayor is not looking at some steep increase year-on-year, that's, 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 and I know I'm stating the obvious there, but that's, that's the sticking point. So I, I think we can offer the mayor a bunch of encouragement, but you're the one that's going to have to, have to offer favorable pricing. So I think Councilor Gould was, was asking if you'd be willing to kind of take a, a lead position on, on kind of advancing this with the mayor. I'd have that same request, I mean, if you can proactively put a proposal, you know, in front of the mayor that would, for consideration, that would be a win-win for both P V D and, and for Republic, I think we, you know, both our community and your company could be in a better place here in, in twelve months.
We, we hear you, we're, we're fully committed to doing that, and, you know, one thing that you can count on, in two thousand thirty-one, not many contractors will bid on this work if it's manual, and it's going to cost a heck of a lot more in two thousand thirty-one. So by working with us now and implementing diversion to pull the disposal out and put it into recycling, and giving the city the benefits of that, and working, working to, to address the contract issues over time is, is beneficial for you and us as your partner.
Yeah, I don't, I can't imagine we would ever be in a position, you know, say we want the full, we exercised all five option years, I can't imagine we'd be going out for a manual pickup contract.
Yeah, there's a, a town and a city went out to bid this, this year, and everybody responded with automation only, you know, it just, it's, it's a safety issue, you know, Brian has over two hundred employees, a number of them in the back of the trucks every day, and he, he goes home, he doesn't go home until he knows everybody's back in the shop at the end of the day, and when you're standing behind a truck, especially at this time of the year when there's no leaves in the trees, and the, and the, and the sun is horizontal early and late in the day, when our guys are out there, that's when we get rear-end collisions, and it's dangerous. I mean, our, our driver's jobs are the fourth most dangerous in the country, the guys in the back of the truck are much more dangerous than the guys in the, in the cabs driving.
Yeah, I, I believe everything you're saying, I, you, you seem to know your facts, you seem very sincere, and, and your desire to move in that direction. I think we as a community want to move in that direction, we're just, we're just stuck with this, with these old terms, so if there's a way to, to kind of get us unstuck so that we don't have to sit around for six more years, kind of doing the same thing, and.
We're with you, we're with you, a hundred percent.
Panicking every time we get a blustery day, that would be fantastic. I, I have another, just kind of, this is more for, you know, it's for the edification of the, of me, but also the public, I think, because I get these questions all the time. We used to have to sort the paper, or we still are encouraged to support the paper from everything else in recycling, and, and, you know, there used to be picked up by two different trucks, and then they got, then there was a truck that kind of had a split in the back, and so once, one of the barrels would go into one and the other, now it all goes in together, and it's, so I, I, you know, that's single stream, I guess. I was always led to believe that we didn't actually do single-stream recycling P V D, and people, so people wonder what, what's actually going on with that recycling, is it actually going to a single-stream facility, or is it going, is it just kind of, are they just trying to keep us in the habit of sorting this stuff out, you know, and, and I can't ever really answer that question because nobody's ever really explained it to me. So what, what actually is going on with our recycling once it leaves the curb?
Your recycling goes back to, to Green Works, the P V D recycling, right behind Five Lickland Street at one oh six Newbury Street, and that is a, a recycling center, so that recycles, it breaks out all the materials, we have the materials, and then we sell off the materials. As Dan mentioned, next month, I'm shutting that down for eight months, and we're putting all state-of-the-art optical sorters and, and all kinds of equipment in it, and making a much better place to go. You know, in the meantime, we have a transfer deal with Gasol. But getting back to your question, the material, the recyclable materials is going back to P V D recycling right now, we have a fifteen, a sub-fifteen percent diversion rate, meaning that the state of Massachusetts says you have to be at at least a fifteen percent diversion rate, we're below that, and we're going to be sub-ten percent when this is up and running. So the material is being recycled.
So the diversion rate is at the, how much you're picking up as recycling, that's not how much of the recycling is actually being recycled, is that correct?
That's, that's the trash we're pulling out of it, so there's still, there's still dirty recyclables that gets collected, and so we have to pull out all the trash, so we have to be at a fifteen percent or lower diversion rate, meaning that we can't have that much trash in the recyclables, and we always beat that number for the state of Massachusetts. But the majority of our materials that we take in, two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty tons per day, is recycled materials, so we are recycling that material.
Okay, great, and it is, that is the right term, it's a single-stream facility in P V D, up on Route One?
Correct.
And that's the facility that you're going to overhaul and update, and is going to be more efficient over time?
Correct.
So that's how I should answer my constituents when they ask me.
And we'll take you for a tour, if you want to come by anytime, and show you, especially when it's up and running. So we're going to go from two hundred and forty tons a day to six hundred tons a day, and we're going to increase our throughput from being able to recycle nineteen tons a day, an hour rather, I'm sorry, to forty tons per hour. So it's going to be quite a place when we get that up and running.
Yeah, I will almost certainly take you up on that offer a tour, that one, it's up, when it's up and running. Very good, thank you so much, if there's anything you can do for the, in the short term to keep the wind from blowing on Tuesday mornings, that would be great, but thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just add one thing in terms of, if the city decided they wanted to automate, we would evaluate the entire city and say, okay, what works with the type of service you want, and then we look at the wards that have the smallest streets and say, what type of truck, we go buy brand-new that will fit those wards. So we would assess what's needed with that service level and try to bring the right truck in from day one, so it's there five days a week.
That's, if we were to move to an, that would be an automated truck, that's properly sized for the.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've noticed that, like in Salem, it seems like they have different-sized trucks, it's obviously a similar setup with some older streets, so, do you have the, is it, is it Republic in Salem as well?
No, we are in Danvus, we just converted them last year, a year ago, January.
Got you, okay, thank you, thank you.
We're in fifty-four thousand cities.
Give me a second bite, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillors, just for the record, we're actually way over on time. I do have Council Melville, then Council Peach, then Council Higgins, any other councillors after those three? And again, we have another meeting scheduled, so, Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. If, when a truck comes across a property that might not qualify for residential, so say there's five or six units in there, and it was being picked up before, what's the process on reporting that on your end? One of the things I notice sometimes is, we, when I get calls about, or, it's not as much recently, but we do get them from time to time, that maybe the truck confuses it with commercial, or it might be multi, it might be, I believe residential pickup is anything four units or less, I believe. So is there any sort of reporting that goes back to the city, just to say, this is what, this wasn't picked up, and this is why?
Well, we, we do have the supervisors out in the street, as Councilman mentioned, Katie, and we have other supervisors as well, and they're in constant contact with local folks that work for the city, so they'd be the ones reporting it real-time for the city, I'll, you know, give or take a few hours throughout the day, but on that day, so they're the ones that are reporting that to the city, whatever they see out there, whether it's that or any other situation they come across.
Yeah, I just would, you know, the de-escalation side of that is important, in case we do get a call, and we might reach out to the city, whether it be Beth, you know, whoever we're, we're going to contact here at the city, just so that they know, so that we can kind of give feedback to the residents, or, sometimes it's complaints about other properties, and, and I think if, if, if some landlords, I think, would try to take advantage, and they have five or six units, and they'll put out their residential, and if you keep taking it, and then suddenly somebody looks and says, we're not going to take it anymore, that community, that's going to be communicated back, we get the call, so. But just on that, the last quick comment is, I, you, I noticed the, they have the automation in Salem, if you go up near Mars Park, you can see when they're doing the trash pickup, it's noticeably different, where the P V D side versus the Salem side, it's, it's, you have a control there, you can kind of see it in action, so, I would support that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. I, I really just wanted to thank you both for coming here, I know we've chatted, Dan, via email and at MMA. I think most of us are in agreement, we, we do want to get to an automation point, we've talked about the rodent issues, and that is, I think, the biggest issue, aside from the wind blowing on Wednesday morning in Ward Three, is, we have a lot of just trash bags that go out that aren't even in barrels, and it just obviously increases the issue. Along the lines that Councilor McGinn brought up of, you know, based on how people park, the truck can't fit, I, I do run into that, and I'm happy to hear, I assume there was something that went into this, knowing Salem has automated pickup, that you would retrofit a truck specific for these neighborhoods that have these tight streets. But along those lines, we've had a lot of issues lately, and I cannot sing Katie's praises enough, I think I've never even left her a voicemail, she just picks up the phone. But when we have school pickup and drop-off, and we have a truck trying to also pick up trash at the same time, it's not a great scenario, so if we could work on just timing, and I assume the drivers probably come back and maybe report that, like, oh, we're going to shift this route a little bit because, you know, at, at three P M, people are picking all their kids up, and we can't even see the trash because all the cars are parked along the, the street, and I've gotten calls in the past of, my trash didn't get picked up, and it's because people are parked in front of the trash, and the driver can't even see that it's there, so, just, just a note, something to think about, just to improve as we, you know, I think Councilor McGinn phrased it well, if we can, if there's a deal in front of the mayor that makes sense financially for the city, you know, we, we can encourage that to be pushed through as councillors, I think we're all in agreement, this is something we'd like to see happen, but we also have a budget to be wary of, and it's hard to justify any big increases to that at, at one time, so. hard to justify any big increases to that at one time. So I think if we can get to a point where this is a win-win for both the city and for Republic, that would be great. I do want to say, the improvements this year versus last year, I don't represent Ward 1, but my parents live there, and I see all the Facebook posts. And I don't want to speak for the Ward 1 councillor, but I think it's significantly better than what we were dealing with last year. At Ward 3, we don't get a lot of, like, missed pickups, because the day is over and we have to kind of leave. They do happen sometimes. Unfortunately, they always happen on my in-laws' street. So, you know, but we're working on that. So I just want to commend you for working with the city, getting the different, you know, dumping location has, I think, tremendously helped us win our major problem of having significant delays in pickup. But other than that, thank you for coming. Thank you for providing this information. It gives us a lot to think about, puts, you know, words on paper that we can actually continue conversations internally in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peach. Councilor Higgins?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to comment on, it looks like in the packet, you know, 46 missed pickups reported this year to date. I imagine that's probably 10x lower than what it was this time last year, judging from the phone calls I received. Which brings me to the missed pickup issue. For Ward 6, our trash collection day is Friday. And we, if somebody, if there's a missed pickup, they're going to have to hold on to their trash until Monday, perhaps, if they don't get a call to Katie quick enough. If you call, if I call Katie on Friday afternoon, there's a good chance that a truck could be sent by. But I understand on Saturdays, there's mostly, you know, commercial pickups being done, so it's difficult to get a truck to go by. And a lot of the residents that called me sometimes too late, they attempted to call the 1-800 number for Republic, and they got no response. So they're really frustrated. Is there, and for people that may be listening, is, what is the preferred method for folks on a Friday afternoon, when they get home from work, finding out that their trash was missed? Is there a number, a local number that they can call, other than Katie's?
Well, other than the call center, and I hear you, it'd be the, Katie'd be a local supervisor. That's it. Because we have, we have folks that are manning that business unit until the very last driver helper goes home, plus some. So there's always going to be somebody there to answer the call via cell phone. So that's the best way to get it. You know, Katie, and we can always give you a backup to Katie, if, because Katie starts early in the morning. I know she starts, I think she starts like 4:00 AM. She's up there early. So we have people that work right up until 7 o'clock at night there. So we can provide those numbers if you have someone. But you remember, like, our guys are usually off the street by 5:00, 5:30, all of our guys as well. So we, I mean, the goal is not to miss anything, but if we do miss, you know, a resident here and there, we want to know about during the day, and we'll send someone back. You know, our experience too is that sometimes they are late putouts. I'm not saying that's always the case. I'm not, because I understand breakdowns and so forth. But we do our best to go back and pick anything up that we missed that day. So I can provide you additional numbers.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I don't want this to go amiss, but anytime I've called Katie Zavapi for a pickup, the response has been fairly quick, even on Saturday, if I call on a Friday afternoon.
Excellent.
Leave a message. So that's been terrific, and it's
I won't terminate it then.
She needs a raise. But definitely, there's been an improvement since last year.
Can I say something real quick to that? I know, I've heard the last year thing. I think a lot of that had to do with the Covanta there that we worked out with Covanta and the end site. Because like Dan mentioned, the hours of service, you know, I'm a former driver. I did 10-plus years in the teamses. So I understand the safety, and safety is number one. So I take, I mean, I was brought over to this particular business unit. I've been with the company 22 years because of my operations and safety experience. And, you know, the hours of service. So when I got involved, and I, we changed some things around, and I saw, in my experience, we had this problem prior with that Haver location, that we were seeing some wait times with an hour trip up, an hour trip back. It became a problem. So I immediately called my contacts at Covanta, worked with the city as well to get this taken. Now, it was a few months more than I wanted, but again, not from the effort of Republic services. I take full responsibility, but we were working with Covanta. But by the time we got this done, and got it done, it was a few months after. And I do feel that that was a big part of our initial stumble when we had that problem last year. But I think that it's a lot better now, what I hear. But I'm here to listen to anything, and I'm taking any comments. I'm going to take it back to continue to fix it. But I just want to, I think that was our biggest stumbling block last year.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. And at the back of the packet, there was mention of a, an app of some sort, like Where's My Truck app. Is that for residential pickup, or is that for commercial?
Good question, Councilor Higgins. The app originally was implemented for commercial customers, industrial customers, you know, for, you know, companies that work all night long and whatnot. And we've developed it now for municipal. You know, the issue you have is that we don't have a resident in our system where we do for all our commercial customers. So we're, it's going to be implemented this year for municipal, so it would be possible. So then, your question, the resident could go on their phone, on the app, and say, hey, I was missed today, had an issue today, whatever it might be. My cart has an issue, I need a new wheel, whatever it might be, they can report that to us through the app. So that's coming. We're very excited about that, because our customers have said we want it. All of us involved in municipal, you know, we have it for all of our other customers that have an account with us. And now they're, we're going to be able to have it for a municipal contract as well.
Yeah, I can, I think that's terrific, because there are a lot of moments where I get calls about trash miss, and it's actually, the truck hasn't arrived yet. And especially with the recycling being like probably four hours later, people get nervous. So if they can track through the app, that would be terrific for them in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Higgins. I'll try to be very quick. I'm going to, a couple of questions that Councilor Rosignol, who had asked for this meeting, left with me. But before I do that, I just want to say, I also am in favor of the carts. But I am under no illusion that there'll be a savings of any sort to the city. I think if there was a savings to the city financially, the mayor would have jumped on it. And I think that I agree with Councilor Gould, that if you truly want to see this done as we do, it's very simple to present a contract to the mayor that you think would work, and he either says yes or no according to the numbers. So, you know, he hears this meeting. He's likely listening now. He knows that we're all in favor of this. But we also, as maybe Councilor Peach said, that we have a budget to adhere to. And we've already had some budget issues with regards to health insurance and retirements and everything else. So trash is the last thing that any of us want to add to that budget. So with that, Katie, amazing. I'll reiterate with every other councillor, and I want to thank both of you for being very responsive. Katie has been tremendous. On that note of Katie and reaching out directly, it was one of the questions Councilor Rosignol had is for numbers, which, you know, Brian can provide all the councilors with, the numbers. But I believe the mayor's office prefers to either be contacted with us so that they are aware, because in the contract, there are penalties for missed trash pickups. So he also needs to be aware. And my fear is that with this number presented to us tonight, with 46 missed pickups, a lot of those aren't being reported to the mayor's office or back and forth to even Republic, whereas we're handling it directly through Katie. So I think for the benefit of everybody, if there is a call made to Katie, or to Brian, or to Dan, that we also let Daryl or Beth know that that call came in, so that they can keep a record of complaints from residents. I think it's helpful. I'll say that the service has been tremendous as of late, much, much better than it was in the first year, Brian. And I do agree, as soon as you change that contract over to Danvers, and that was partially our fault too, it took the city solicitor and purchasing quite a few weeks to look at that contract to make sure that it was okay that we moved that trash to Danvers. So since then, I think things have been much better, with the exception of leaf pickup, which the mayor just announced yesterday. Leaf pickup was a disaster. There's a question from Councilor Rosignol. How do we correct what happened with leaf pickup? Because it was a tough couple of weeks with wet bags being left out and leaves blown all over the place. How can we correct that?
John, this was a tough year for leaves. You know, we, as we renegotiate contracts, we go through contracts, we suggest a full-barrel limit. Because I have guys that literally start up one street, by the time they get down the other street, they're completely loaded out. So it becomes a challenge for us. I'm not even going to sit there and say I have a magic wand. I don't. I don't have a magic wand for leaf. You know, we throw as much labor as we can at it. This year was exceptionally heavy. The falls are always heavy. And I'm not making excuses, but I've seen this in every community that we've ever dealt with, and just not even Republic Services. So we try our best to stay ahead of leaves. We try our best to throw extra labor out there. But there are times when we just can't. So we work really hard with our cities and towns to just try to limit the amount of yard waste they can put out at one pickup. And that helps us out a lot as well. And I understand it's probably not going to happen until we renegotiate this contract. So, I mean, the short answer is, I can throw as much labor as I can at it, but I also have 13 other municipalities that do yard waste as well. So it becomes a real challenge to balance that labor, to try to get the leaves off. And our number-one priority is the trash and recycling. We get the trash and recyclables first. So if we do have to pull something off of our, or we do have to make a cost correction in the field, it's to make sure we pick up our trash and recycling, and then we get to our leaves after the fact. So it's a tough one, John. It really is. It's just, in addition to throwing additional labor out there, like the wind, we just hope that a lot of leaves don't fall off the trees.
Thank you very much. A last question from Councilor Rosignol with regards to damaged receptacles from residents. We do get those calls often, whether that's your fault, or whether, you know, how you prove that, that the wind blew it. But today, as a matter of fact, one went out that there were two barrels damaged. How do you guys deal with damaged trash receptacles from residents?
I mean, we've replaced them. If we find out that there's a damage, and I guys do it, or sometimes if we don't do it, we'll bring out another tote for them. We'll just, we'll just have the supervisors bring out a tote for them. I mean, it's not, you know, it also depends on habitual breakers. You know, we know that there's been residents, and every three, four months, we're bringing out new totes. So that's something that we'll put down on. But we're pretty good about taking care of bringing totes. And if it's a wheel or something, we'll fix it. Or if it's a lid, we can fix it, depending on the style of tote. So that's how we handle that.
Thank you very much. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Oh, in favor and opposed, meeting adjourned.